Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to get going at 6:00 PM sharp. Last speaker signing up, and then Ms. Paquette will pull the sheet. Good evening. My name is Chris Pia. I am town council chair for the town of Stratford, calling tonight's public forum to order. For those of you who are new, it's a very simple set of rules. Everyone's given three minutes. We're going to go in order as signed up. Everyone's given three minutes. Ms. Paquette, the council clerk, will have a little buzzer that'll go off. You know, we have a good amount of people signed up tonight. I ask everyone to stay sharp to three minutes, please, out of courtesy for everybody else. And just please state your name and address for the record, and we will go from there. So going in order, the first person signed up, I have is Mike Fiorello. Mike?
Mike Fiorello, 20 Red Fox Road. Good evening. I speak today as a product of the Stratford Public Schools, a town resident, a Stratford teacher of more than 20 years, and president of the Stratford Education Association. I care deeply about the state of our town and of our schools. I do not want teachers to lose their jobs, especially when the school age population in town is growing. I do not want to see counselors, or administrators, or tutors, or aides lose their jobs, especially when student needs are rising, not falling. I do not want to see class sizes grow when they are already too large. I do not want to see course offerings cut when we already have too many students in study halls. We cannot close a school. This is madness. I will tell you, residents of Stratford do not want to get into the weeds of what funds originate in Washington DC, Hartford, or Stratford. They do not want to hear what funds go directly to the town side or the board side. In fact, they don't want us to be on different sides at all. They would be hard-pressed to differentiate between supplanting and supplementing. They do not want to calculate an alliance formula, an ECS formula, the minimum budget requirement, or the special education allocation. They want their students to get what they deserve. We elected members of the Board of Education, and they have access to the same information as members of the town council, and board members determined that an increase of 4.57% is necessary to keep us at status quo. Additional funds for new programs based on our being an alliance district are welcome, but the basic operation and staffing of schools is the responsibility of the town, and the Board of Education, in multiple workshops open to all stakeholders, came upon 4.57%. I urge you to approve a Board of Ed budget that adequately funds the transportation, heating, supplies, and personnel necessary to educate our Stratford children. Thank you.
Next up, I have Larry Hadad.
Hi, thank you. My name is Larry Hadad. So I thought we should observe a moment of silence, because that's what a school will sound like if it's closed, if a classroom's empty, if teachers are cut. An unsimulated mind. I also thought that this is the same sound I heard at the previous meetings when other concerned citizens spoke. All of them spoke in favor of a fully funded budget. So that sound of silence was everyone else, I guess, that thinks it's a good idea to cut the budget for the schools. Not sure why anyone, even if they're not a parent, there is, I've been a Stratford resident for the past 20 years. If you're a property owner, if you care about property values, if you care about the success of the town, I don't think this is a partisan issue, so I'm not really sure why it would fall to party lines to decide whether to fully fund or not the schools. So again, I'm not going to, you know, say things that have been said by everyone else, but I think this is an easy one. We need a fully funded budget. We need a successful education program in Stratford. Thank you.
Next, I have Jill Powers.
Hi, good evening, board members. My name is Jill D'Angelo-Powers. I live at 103 Husatonic Avenue. I'm here this evening to also voice my support for fully funding the Board of Education's proposed budget. I have two young kids here in town. One just started kindergarten, the other one is in preschool, and children are the future of this town. They're going to be the future voters, they're going to be the future investors, and we really need to support them. We just recently became an alliance district, which means that we are underperforming as it is, and that was even before COVID. So we really need to put effort towards our education and our children, because they are going to be the future. Thank you very much.
Next up, I have Patricia Craig.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Craig, 58 Glenwood Avenue. I grew up in Stratford. I'm a product of our public school system. Having graduated from Benell High School, I'm a resident. It is very frustrating to hear and see the lack of priority given to Stratford schools. I'm a hospice nurse. My father was a Connecticut State Police officer, and my uncle was a Stratford firefighter for 35 years. I'm part of a family history of service. It is ludicrous to me, and it goes against common sense and logic, not to, at the very least, meet the contractual obligations of our Board of Education employees. The 2.5% offered by Mayor Hoydick does not meet the contractual obligation to existing employees of the Stratford school system. What this means is not, is that not only does this affect our teachers, but our schools' medical staff, secretaries, custodians, transportation of our children to and from school, and the special education needs of students that need the most support. The proposed 4.24% budget increase for the town side, which obviously we know, means that the town portion is fully funded. A 2.5% increase to the Board of Education means they are the only town department that is not fully funded. Where is the justification in that? Why are we being told that the Board of Education will not even meet contractual obligations for our school system? The Town Ordinance Committee meeting for the Board of Ed was scheduled during the school's April vacation. Dr. Sunday was unable to address the ordinance committee at that time, so he could address questions the town council had. It seems to me that before a decision is made, the superintendent of schools should have been able to explain the budget requests needed to run our schools. From my perspective, Dr. Sunday was, in essence, ignored and silenced. My stepson attends Flood Middle School. He will begin his freshman year of high school this fall. Without proper funding, how will the town promise me that he will be part of a school system that is always improving? How will the town ensure to me that he will not be in a classroom that is overrun because there is not enough staff and educators to support appropriate class sizes? How will laying off teachers support his educational goals? My stepson has a medical 504 plan in place. His health condition, while managed, is significant. Will the town of Stratford be able to promise me that the medical staff won't be affected, therefore placing him at risk, as the town cannot meet their contractual obligation to them? Unless the Board of Education has granted the appropriate budgetary increase and is fully funded at 4.5% or at the least 4.1%, just as the rest of the town departments have been, this town will be failing our children. It is not just the Board of Education that is responsible for our children. It is our town's responsibility as a whole. Our students will be negatively impacted by 2.5% and anything less than that, anything less than meeting contractual obligation, is unacceptable.
Next, I have Kara Tygen. Forgive me, ma'am, if I mispronounce your last name. I apologize.
Kara Tygen.
Tygen, thank you very much.
118 Husatonic Avenue. And I'm currently part of Parent C cohort number nine, and I'm here to express my concern about the school budget and ask you to vote to support the Board of Ed's proposed budget. Last month, I emailed the mayor and all of the town council members expressing my concerns, and I heard back from a couple of you, so thank you for taking the time to read my email and get back to me. To clarify one point that was brought up in one of those replies. The grant money we are receiving as an alliance district is specifically not meant to replace existing programming. That is clearly outlined in the specifications of the grant. To invest in the town's school system is to invest in the town as a whole. This is what drives home values up and draws people to a town, but more importantly, the Board of Ed's budget should be approved to support the children of this town and their teachers who work so hard every day. Thank you.
Next, I have Liz Grambling. Liz Grambling? Going once. Ms. Grambling? Okay, we're going to move on. Next, I have Susan Marcus. Are you Liz?
Chris Pia?
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize for being late.
If you could just state your name and address in the record, ma'am.
Absolutely. My name's Liz Grambling. Live at 295 Fox Hill Road. Do you remember two years ago? Two years ago, teachers were our heroes. The governor had just announced that we wouldn't be going back to school until the fall. And after nearly two months of distance learning, we had all gained fresh appreciation for our staff members as we celebrated them with our first remote teacher appreciation And now, here we are, two years later. Two years of hybrid learning, in-school learning, quarantines, illness, loss. Two years of unbearable heaviness carried by our community, our students, our families, our teachers and staff. Now we are on the welcome cusp of a new normal, hoping for brighter days ahead. But those two years have left a mark. We see it nationally, in the broadened achievement gaps and the behavior struggles in schools, and we see it in our students here in Stratford. I know the council works to adopt a responsible budget. I've contacted you all about my concerns about planning to use alliance funding to supplant our budget. Relying on outside funding to meet our basic needs is not best practice, and will leave us in a deep hole when that funding runs out. Without full funding from the town, Stratford schools will probably lose staff. Our staff is our most valuable and most irreplaceable resource. If we are to close the achievement gap and improve our school environments, staff will be at the core of the success. We can't do it without them, all of them. The 4.57% budget increase request from the Board of Ed is responsible, is realistic, taking into account the many variables and circumstances unique to Stratford schools. It was openly, transparently, and carefully workshopped. This is the funding our schools need. This is the funding our town deserves. Our new normal will involve a lot of work, but with the town's support, we can achieve a school system all Stratford residents can be proud of. Please fully fund our schools.
Ms. Marcus? Susan Marcus?
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Susan Marcus, 286 Nassau Road. So I also emailed everyone and the mayor, and I only received one response back from Ms. Sutton, so thank you for that, and I do appreciate everyone's time. I understand that this is a thankless job that you all have. At the same time, though, I do not understand the way the town works, where they don't work with the Board of Ed. Like you said, your response to me was that the Board of Ed is instilling fear in us, and that shouldn't be the way that the responses work. The town council and Board of Ed should be working hand in hand. So I am an almost lifelong resident of Stratford. I'm a graduate of Stratford High. I went to Nichols. I went to Worcester. I now have two kids in Eli Whitney and a daughter at Benell that went through the Alps program. She was one of the second-to-last classes before it got cut. I firsthand see the decline of our schools. I see the class sizes growing. I see the programs being cut. I see my kids not being challenged and being bored and not being, you know, ready for school that comes after high school. I see them not wanting to even go to school, because they're going to be bored when they get there, and they're not going to get lighter grades on their report cards, they're going to get numbers. They're, they just, it's not the same system that I grew up going through, and they need more. And I think even the way the town funds the schools to date has not been enough. So to not fund what we have now is ridiculous, because they should get more. We need more teachers. We need more programs. We need more challenging things for our students, so they're prepared for the world outside once they leave Stratford. My husband and I chose to come back to Stratford after we left for a brief time, and I have to say I'm disappointed. But where do we go now? We can't leave. So we're stuck in this town, and we want our kids to have this great education that we see our neighboring towns have, and it's just not happening. So I just, please, ask all of you to think about how important it is to fund our kids and to also realize that these two grants that are coming from the state are not part of this money. It's not something that you can use towards programs that we already have, and not something we can use towards the teachers' salaries that we already pay and that we are committed to do. So please, you know, don't close our schools, don't cut our teachers. Please think we need more for our kids. Thank you.
Next, I have Hillary Rivera. Hillary?
Hi, my name is Hillary Rivera, and I live on 110 Brandon Avenue. I'm here asking for a budget of $125.7 million to be approved, please. I'm here to speak for the kids that never felt like they had a space to feel comfortable about their identity. Oops, sorry. I'm here for the kids-
Hillary, you can tilt it more toward-
I can.
You can actually pull it out if you want.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, this script's too much. I'm here for the kids that never felt safe with their sexual identity. I'm here representing the childhood version of me. I grew up in Bridgeport and moving into Stratford for middle school. Going into middle school, teenagers face so many challenges trying to discover their identity, and one of them is including their sexuality. Going to middle school was one of the hardest experiences in my life, and I genuinely believe I will not be alive to this day speaking. I wish schools had programs to help kids with mental health issues or were struggling with their identity. I wish for this money to be approved, so we could have those programs for the youth of queer people, and so, not just for the kids, but for parents, because it must be so difficult to think they know their child so well, to then come out as a whole new gender, as a whole new sexuality. It was very difficult for my family to understand me going through all these changes and me not feeling comfortable about my sexuality or my gender identity. So I wish this money to be approved, so we can have those programs and we could maybe save a life and save a teenager who could do so much but feel like they are nothing. So please, can you approve the money, so we can make these schools a safer place for not just queer kids, but for kids in general, so they can feel safe and they can feel like people hear them, because we don't feel heard, and no one hears us until someone dies. So please hear us before someone else has to go.
Next up is Linda Palermo.
Good evening. Linda Palermo, 46 Watt Place, Stratford. While I'm listening to the people get up and speak, I could remember a number of years ago, my son had to go to Franklin School, and they asked me if I wanted to sit in the classroom. I said, "Sure." So they had to tell the kids, "Share with Mrs. Palermo. Don't worry about sharing with me." So they felt that my son should get some counseling. They enrolled my son in counseling, and then they said about the test. I said, "What test?" I never signed for anything. "What test?" They had actually given my son a psychology test, and I said, "Oh, what do I do with this? Do I go after you, or do I just sit back and say, 'You made fools of yourself,' because my kid outsmarted you?" Now, the other issue I want to speak about, and I do believe the children should get more, okay? The tax cuts you've done aren't so very good. Some people are saving maybe a dollar a month on their tax bills. That's not going very far. Now, my pet peeve statements would have to be with regard to an injury claim I had. They, the town attorneys here in their circle of logical thinking, I think you want to call it, and they wanted my case to be dismissed. Unfortunately, the judge, may he rest in peace, gave them two counts of six. I got all the rest. So I'm waiting for them to approach me to settle the claim, because they're going to have to settle it, and it says right in the motion that the judge entered in favor of myself. If it doesn't go there, and we keep going around after the money, it's going to cost the town more money eventually, because I've already been told who I could go to to try to get that more money, and I will do it. I do not deprive anyone of anything, nor do I like to be deprived of anything. Thank you for listening, and have a happy-
Next is Jocelyn Miranda. Jocelyn?
You could pull it, you could pull it. Yeah, there you go. I'm Jocelyn Miranda, 180 Peace Acre Lane, and I'm speaking because I think if we, if the budget gets cut more, then, sorry, then we won't have the resources we need to learn properly and to thrive and to better Connecticut's future and the world. Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Sonia Huber. Sonia? Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Sonia Huber. I live at 75 Clinton Avenue. I've lived here for 10 years. I'm a parent, and my son is about to graduate Stratford High next month. Our experience has been great in the classroom, but we've also seen this heartbreaking budget agony over and over. We've seen the grade school language program cut, the Alps program cut, among others. We moved here from a district in rural southeast Georgia. We thought, "Oh, it's Connecticut. There won't be funding trouble." But it's actually been so much more conflict-ridden than rural Georgia with larger class sizes. As all parents during the pandemic, I saw my son go to school for a year and a half in the basement, and he has gaps. All of our students need extra help now. They all have gaps. I love living in Stratford. We're a very diverse place, and I love that about our town. But our students need the assistance that our alliance designation notes, and not all of their assistance is going to be perfectly met by those alliance funds. This is a larger issue of social equity. Studies show that even one significant teacher can make a huge difference in a high-risk student's life. What if the teacher or staffer, we have to let go, is that student, is that staffer? Thank you.
Next, I have Isaiah, I believe it's Johnson? Johnson, correct, Isaiah?
Yeah.
I just couldn't read it. Thank you.
My name is Isaiah Johnson. I'm a resident at 585 Nichols Avenue. I'm also a longtime student in Stratford. I go to Stratford High right now. I'm in 11th grade, and I, like so many others, have seen the steady decline in budgeting for public schools, and I believe that in these past two years, past going on three years, the time is, it's high time for us to not only decrease, increase funding, but at least to meet the quota that our Board of Ed is suggesting for us to even maintain the status quo. I think that goes without saying that that's what we need to do, and I find it hard to believe that that's where we're at right now, that we need to be debating on whether or not we should even be increasing our funds to maintain that status quo. So, yeah, thank you.
Next, I have Carrie Widem.
Hi, I'm Carrie Widem, 2037 Barbridge Avenue, Stratford, Connecticut. Fully funding our education budget is not going to fix the problem of an underperforming school system. A clear strategy and better curriculum will. Let's start there. Thank you.
Next, I have signed up is Chris Cormier.
Christopher Cormier, 127 Warwick Avenue. I spoke with you guys, I spoke to you last month regarding the Board of Education's budget that they submitted to you. It was a well-thought-out bipartisan budget for the school year 2022, 2023, for 4.57%, which would maintain the current level of service for our children and contractual obligations. You all know that. I'm speaking to you this time as a dad of four boys in town, Worcester, two at Franklin, and one who is actually one of the special ed children that are outplaced out of the district. He goes to school in Norwalk. The troubles he was having before COVID were manageable. After COVID, became unmanageable. At Franklin, through the STEPS program, he was not successful at either one. The dollars that are needed for special ed and for interventions are absolutely important for children like mine. If those funds aren't there, we're going to lose these kids. These children won't get the services they need. They will, they'll be, the specialists that are providing these services will get spread too thin, and nothing will be... I went off topic. This budget is, it's a strong budget. It's, the board looked in all the corners to find the money and do what they needed to do. If there was ever a time where we should be funding the requested budget, this should be it. Thank you.
Next signed up on the list is Mike Hendrick. Next signed up on the list is Mike, Mike Hendrick.
Hello, Council. My name is Mike Hendrick. I am a member of the Board of Ed, but tonight I speak to you as a private citizen. First, I want to say our superintendent schools regarding school closure were appalling. We have no room for that type of fear mongering here in Stratford. He does not have the sole authority to close a school. His comments maliciously manipulated and created additional stress on our teachers, parents, and students. And to do this during Teacher Appreciation Week is even more callous. In addition, his inappropriate remarks claiming nefarious activities surrounding the MBR were uncalled for. Instead of seeking the truth about the work of State Senator Kevin Kelly, he chose to lash out in a despicable manner, leveling false claims and besmirching our hard-working elected officials, when in truth, Mr. Kelly's actions ensured taxpayers weren't victims of unintended financial consequences of the legislation. We are now an alliance district because of failed leadership. $1 million will circumvent the council and is intended to remove failing programs and remove them with new programs with state oversight, not to remove staff. It is not, to be clear, a gluttonous slush fund to reward the BOE's failures at the taxpayer's expense. That circumvented money should be calculated into the budget. The taxpayer should not have to pay for our failures. How to fill the gap? Maintain the existing staffing levels. Currently, we have a $1.5 billion surplus in the staff item. There are currently only two teaching positions posted. We do not have a teacher shortage. We have removed four positions to administer the Second Hill pre-K since the responsibilities will be dispersed throughout the district. A $400,000 savings. Add staff and bring kids back to, back to Bird's Eye Complex, a possible $400,000 savings. Remove our part-time residence officer. Turn the 50-plus investigations over to the police. Aggressively go after those who do not belong here. That will bring untold savings. Move graduation day from a federal holiday so we don't have to pay triple time for our police and public works. Put that money back into the classroom. We have additional funding from Title I and state grants coming. Last year, we received an additional $25 million from ESSER grants, which we will receive again this year. It's hard to understand how those additional grants, plus an additional 2.5%, cannot help us to balance the budget. For 20 years, I've heard the same story. Give us more money, or we'll cut teachers. Over the last six years, we've had a surplus from council budgets. If we received the BOE requested budget, that surplus would have been even greater. Obviously, the mayor and the council are better at estimating our costs than we are. The town also gives $25 million in in-kind contributions to our schools to ensure they rep, they run properly and repair vandalisms. Teachers and staffs are soldiers, heart of the battle. We need generals, not more officials.
If you could finish up, Mr. Hendrick. If you could finish up.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
And if you doubt our mayor's commitment to the Board of Ed, wait till June, and you see all the banners of all our graduating students adorning Main Street and Barnum Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I give everyone the courtesy of a couple extra seconds. I've never cut anybody off. For those of you who have consistently come here, I have consistently done that out of professional manner. I will continue to. Thank you. The next person signed up on the list is Gerald Gray. Gerald, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Gray, 29 Shoreline Drive, Stratford. I did not come with a prepared speech tonight because I was very hungry. I signed up earlier, and I had to go down the street to go to the free soup kitchen because I am now homeless, penniless, and starving in the street because of the direct consequence of the corruption and dirty dealings of people like Kevin Kelly and parties in the town of Stratford. As many of you know, back in 1971, my mom and I co-created Nature's Way Health Foods down the street. And over four decades, we built the business into a multimillion-dollar, very successful enterprise. Per the actions of the Kevin Kelly, the Probate Court, and the town of Stratford, every penny of what we created has been stripped from us. My mother's total civil rights have been stripped from us. And yesterday being Mother's Day, I felt compelled to come here and honor my mother's memory and speak out yet again to this council about what a horrific, horrific, dirty-dealing town this has become with the predation that takes place upon seniors, regular citizens, and targeted prey via the actions of people like Kevin Kelly, et cetera. I, I have presented a packet to each of you, and I can give anyone in the audience a copy of just a very basic structure of how this is being done. This can be done to anyone in the town of Stratford as it was done to us. Thank you.
Okay, the last person, last person signed up is Lou DiCilio.
Lou DiCilio, 65 Ferry Court. I too am a product of the Stratford school system, Franklin School, Worcester, Stratford High School. Honorable members of the Town Council, it's the same game, just different names, and we all hope things would be different with the new superintendent of schools. Let me be clear, neither the Town Council nor any mayor has ever given the Board of Education less money than they had the year before. Never. The sky is always falling on East Broadway, doom and gloom, with every mayoral budget proposed and final council approval. But every year, the BOE comes up with a surplus. Last year's surplus was $1.2 million. And a surplus means that you're overcharging the taxpayers, and we gave them too much. It's important to understand that the Town Council nor the mayor have any say to where the Board of Education spends their money. That falls on the Board of Education, not the superintendent of schools. It falls on the seven elected members of the Board of Education. How many times do we hear the threats from the BOE administration, they will cut the arts and athletic programs our students love? How many times do we hear the BOE administration threaten to cut the teachers needed to educate our children? Or mandate our teachers take furloughs that later turn out to be unneeded? So now, Uwe Asundé threatens to close a school to try and intimidate and scare his way into getting more money. Why isn't he threatening to cut East Broadway? In the end, the council will give the BOE plenty of money than they had last year, and in the end, it won't be Dr. Asundé who will decide where the money is spent. It will be the seven members we elected to the Board of Education. So everyone in this room, pay very close attention to Chairwoman Andrea Corcoran, Vice-Chairwoman Lisa Carol Fabian, Secretary Amy Wilsey, Janice Coopie, Kristin Bedell, Sean Kennedy, and Mike Hendrick. Those are the individuals who will either cave to Uwe Asundé's threats, or they will stand up to his bullying and reassert their authority to show the new superintendent who is actually in charge of making decisions when it comes to funding the Board of Education. I just want to say, the, the budget request from the Board of Ed was $4.9 million. The mayor's proposal was $3 million. With the alliance money of 1.1 and Title I of $150,000, you're talking about a $650,000 difference in what is being funded to what the request is. Now add in the $1.2 million surplus that they had last year, because they didn't start 100, 1.2 million in the hole. They started where they were funded last year. And so with that being said, let's look, we look forward to, obviously, you passing your budget, and then the seven elected members of the Board of Education deciding whether they decide to close a school, or to cut teachers, or to actually fully fund the programs our kids need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'm closing the public forum at 6:39. We'll reconvene at exactly, exactly 7 o'clock. Okay, good evening, everybody. Calling this meeting to order, my name is Chris Pia, Town Council Chair for the town of Stratford. Today is May 9, 2022. It is 7:00 PM, and I'm calling the, the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is going to be the invocation and pledge by Councillor, Councillor Can. Please stand.
To everyone, to everyone who inspires, to everyone who strives, for all of us who seek to create a better future, please guide the town of Stratford to continue to make the best choices to assume the optimal outcomes for all the residents who call this town our home, and all the businesses that work to serve our needs. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from CDBG public hearing and the regularly scheduled meeting of April 11, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Lord, Dan.
I have Mr. O'Brien.
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I have a little correction that I would like to place on the record.
Go ahead.
On the CPDG agenda, the minutes, just real quick, I see that Mr. Poison is listed as both being present and absent. Ms. Sutton was not in attendance, and I was not in attendance either, and my name is not listed on the attendance at all. So, thank you, Margot.
Mr. Attorney, do we need to make a motion to amend, or is a scrivener's error appropriate to? Okay, okay. So Ms. Paquette, you have the, everybody good with that? It's recorded on YouTube, and it's recorded on YouTube, so anybody can verify that. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dancho.
Thank you.
So, yes, so we will, we will approve as corrected. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any oppose? No oppose. Motion passes 9-0. Mr. Poison is running away from a track meet. Okay. Next item on the agenda, being there's no ceremony, item three is none, and we're going to go to Mayor's Report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. I hope all the mothers and families had a nice Mother's Day yesterday. I've got some great news. We had our reviews from Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's regarding our bond ratings, and they have held at A2 and AA negative, stable respectively. Moody's comments were, "Management has stabilized the financial operations of the town through careful expense management and conservative revenue anticipation. The ability for management to effectively balance operations without further depletion of reserves will be the central focus of future reviews." And Standard &amp; Poor's highlights were, "Overall, the town has exhibited a steadiness of its finances, illustrated by three consecutive years of positive operating results and corresponding slight growth in its fund balance." So that's exciting news for us. We have observed Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10 through the 16th. April, we recognized Autism Awareness Month. The National Day of Prayer was May 5th. Mental Health Awareness Month is May. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month also in May. Older Americans Month is May, if you can hear the pattern going on here. National Police Week was May 11th through, is May 11th through the 17th. National EMS Week is the 15th through the 21st. And National Public Health Week, Volunteer Appreciation Week, and this week is National Nurses Week. Regarding COVID, our statewide positivity continues to tread upward, and Stratford remains in the red level for the period of April 17 through the 30th. Stratford has an average of 28 cases per 100,000 people per day during that period, which is an increase of 4.9 since the last report. This, and as of now, this is an increase of 151 confirmed cases, this is as of today, and an increase of five probable cases since our last report in May 2nd. Our fully vaccinated percentages are from 5 to 11 years old is almost 32%. 12 to 17 years old is 74.36%. 18 to 24 is 78.99% or 79. 25 to 44 is 73.81%. 45 to 65, 45 to 64 is 79.62% vaccinated, and the winner is 65-plus at 95.7%. Our total fully vaccinated population is 79.67%, and our case rate is 11.4%. The Stratford Health Department continues to offer first, second, and the second booster Moderna of COVID vaccines at the Bird's Eye Complex. The department also continues to monitor case rates and hospitalizations locally and across the state. In recent events, we had the Long Brook Park cleanup, and the pollinator garden was planted, and that was April 23rd. Thank you, Councilor Sheik. Houston Tonic River Cleanup Day and Operation Greensweep was held on April 30th. I think Kelly is here someplace. There she is. Thank you, Kelly, for all of your leadership and for Public Works for nice help with that. The town is now designated as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. We had tapping of Huzzah honors beer on Two Roads on May 4th. We had Fish with a Cup event sponsored by PAL, and that was held at Long Brook Park on May 1st. Restaurant Week was April 24 through the 30th. We welcomed two new employees at the Health Department. Walter Awasu is the health educator, and Christine Agapito is the public health nurse. We also welcomed two new police officers to Stratford, Peter Sukatchki and Robert Christiani. I also was able to participate in an event sponsored by Rosa Delgado, Congressman Rosa Delgado at Cubtech in Stratford, and it was about women-owned businesses, and that happened on April 12th. The upcoming events that we have to look forward to is Booth Memorial Park Opening Day on Sunday, May 15th, from 12 to 4. The Veterans Breakfast is going to be held on May 25th at 9:00 AM at Epizano's Four Seasons. You can call the mayor's office to register. Juilliard School musicians Cameron Chase and David Bernard will perform a live concert at the Stratford Library's Level Room, and that'll be tomorrow, Tuesday, May 10th at 7:00 PM. EMS Graduation will be held at EMS Headquarters, that's tomorrow also, the 10th, at 6:00 PM. The Connecticut Air and Space Museum will hold Corsair Day. Actually, it should be Corsair Days, because it's May 28th and 29th. The Shakespeare Market is going to still be going on. The upcoming dates are May 15th, June 5th, and June 19th. The Baldwin Center is joining the National Observance of Older Americans Month with daily morning coffee shop specials and a classic rock concert on May 17th. Community Services is pleased to support main mental health awareness with telehealth and counseling appointments and in-person counseling appointments for four weekends, four evenings, excuse me, per week. Professionals are certified in trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy and other evidence-based treatment models. The Stratford Partnership for Youth and Families Annual Town Hall Meeting and Awards is Thursday, May 19th at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Local leaders and organizations will be recognized for their contributions to making positive difference in our community. Memorial Day events, the ceremony will be at 11 o'clock at Academy Hill, and the parade will step off at noon. This is being organized by VFW Post 9460. Pride Day Observations are 9:00 AM on Wednesday, June 1st at Town Hall. The Juneteenth Ceremony is 9:00 AM on Friday, June 17th at Town Hall. Let's remember, Monday is a national holiday where we celebrate our first Juneteenth as a national holiday, and the state of Connecticut also adopted Juneteenth as a holiday. Stratford Museum Day was going to be held on June 11th. Eight Stratford museums will open their doors to the community. Emissions fees are waived, but donations are appreciated. And Stratford Museum Day coincides with the marketing plan to promote our museums, which is coordinated by the Economic Development Department and sponsored by the Economic Development Commission. Make Music Day is June 21st at the Shakespeare property from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. I already told you that was Restaurant Week. And the next celebrate festival will be Stratford, it's not Stratford Day, it's Main Street Festival on June 4th. Some in economic development news. We are meeting with the Army regarding the conveyance of the Army engine plant this week, and we will, actually, next week, and we will finish ironing out the details of the conveyance of the property. The conveyance date is sometime now mid-July. Center School is going through an 824 review from, and is on the Planning Commission agenda for the 17th of May. The Plan of Conservation Development Contract has been signed with consultant FH1 Studio. The first meeting with staff and the consultant is being held next week. the consultant is being held next week. Public workshops will tentatively occur in September. Complete Streets Phase One, the town is waiting for DOT for the final design approval. The deadline is June 10th. Once DOT has signed off on the, on the project, it can be, begin. And Complete Streets Phase Two, interviews and selections of proposals will be held in mid-May. Phase Two will run from Barnum Avenue at the intersection of Barnum and Main to Windsor Avenue, right past Paradise Green. We have some new businesses in the town. Golden Crust is soon to open at Knots Landing. Dulce de Leche is Argentinean Bakery on Broadridge Avenue, and though it's not a new business, the southbound exit of 33 Interchange will open on Friday, May 13th. We have some upcoming ribbon cuttings. Reader's Block, located in Colonial Square, which is 2420 Main Street, and that ribbon cutting will be May 18th at 3:30 p.m. And Michelizee's will formally be opening in Paradise Green on Saturday, May 28th. A ribbon cutting will be scheduled in June. And I have some staff news, additional staff news. Our well-respected, admired, beloved Fire Chief Brian Lampert will be retiring June 30th of this year. Chief Lampert has served the Stratford Fire Department for 34 years. He started in April of 1988 and has worked his way up the ranks from firefighter, fire marshal, deputy chief, and now chief, and he will be sorely missed. Thank you, Brian. And the last thing, Chairman, is if you, if you've seen the Connecticut Post, you know that we submitted a proposal to purchase the airport and the Airport Commission, resoundingly picked another, another operator and purchaser, said, in the Connecticut Airport Authority. That contract approval goes to the Bridgeport City Council. From there, it will be referred to their Contracts Committee, and after that, it'll go back to the Council for final approval.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll open it up to council for questions for the mayor. Who'd like to go first? Anybody? Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, Mayor Hoydic. Couple of times, two months ago at Town Council, I asked about, where did the town lose $5.7 million due to COVID? And we've not gotten a report that kind of quantified the impact of COVID on the town's revenues, although we supposedly have one. Can you provide any dialogue on why it's appropriate to use ARP monies to balance this year's operating budget?
Thank you, Councilor, for the question. Through the chair, you're talking about next year proposed fiscal year '23, 5.7 million, not this year's. Next year. Yes. I think that was discussed at, at the ordinance workshop, if I believe. If it wasn't, I can ask Dawn or Chris to come up to the mic, and also, Dawn is just alerting me that she did a report. Dawn, do you happen to have the highlights of the, of the report that you can share with the council?
Dawn, if you can come up. Thank you.
I don't have the report on hand, but I can certainly just go get, go get it right now if you want me to.
Would you mind giving the highlights, and then, after you give the highlights, then we can get a copy for everybody. They can have it tonight.
So, basically, what I did was I went through the budget from the previous year to this year, and I detailed the losses for each of the revenue categories. I don't remember the amounts off the top of my head, but there was a reduction in, say, state funding, then a reduction in fees, so it shows the breakout for those two categories. For, I mean, the multiple categories under the revenue and what the difference is. And then the amount using of ARPA is less than the, it was about, I think, 6.2 million revenue difference, and the proposed budget had, I think, 5.7 million. So, it was under the amount of the revenue differences. And the revenue differences have actually increased, as you've heard, because the education cost share amount is reduced.
Dawn, if you could, to the mayor's point, if you could provide that to the council after the meeting?
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor, for the councilors?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hoydic. My only question is, you had just mentioned the Planning Commission on May 17th will have Center School. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilor Sheik, through the chair, the 18, 824 review, which is the statute, 824, any town property, town-owned property that is going to be sold, needs to go through the Planning Commission for that review. And then, that review is then referred to the council in a resolution, whether they, you know, agree with it or they don't.
Okay. Because I, I had checked their agenda for May 17th, and I don't see Center School, the 824 review, on there. So, if we could just get clarification maybe after the meeting, please.
Thank you. Attorney Leclair, since you had worked with the planner, would you elaborate a little bit about your understanding of this?
It's my understanding that it will be considered at that meeting in May, the 824. I've met with the planner, and it should be on their agenda. I'll confirm. If they made a mistake on the agenda, we'll, we'll make sure it gets corrected.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor, for the councilors? No? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is going to be Town Attorney's Report. Mr. Hodgson.
Thank you, Chair. This is a brief report for the town attorney in the month of April. We settled the general liability claim for $9,000. We opened up four new property damage claims. We have four new tax appeals, two zoning appeals, and a zoning enforcement action, as well as two FOI requests that were filed this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Next item on the agenda is going to be 6.2.1. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I move item 6.2.1, a resolution regarding annual action plan for program year 48, Community Development Block Grant, CBDG funding.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, a second motion.
I have a second by Councilman Connor. Any discussion on this one?
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Hi.
Doesn't matter who. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to offer an amendment. The fourth item under Public Service is Sterling House Community Center, $13,000 for food pantry and resource connection. The amendment is to break that into three parts. $4,000 for Bridgeport Neighborhood Trust, $4,000 for literacy volunteers, and $5,000 for Sterling House.
Okay, motion to amend. Per Mr. Khan, do I have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Rice. Any discussion on this? Is Tara here?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Connor.
This is the first I'm hearing about it, but I'm, I'm a little reluctant to support something that's going to split it, you know. To me, you're complicating it. Once you start, man, I'm putting myself in Sterling House position. You're going to have, they're going to have buckets of money they're going to have to keep track of. There's going to be infighting. And also, if I hear you, you're cutting money out for Bridgeport, is that what your amendment says?
I can explain.
Okay.
Bridgeport Neighborhood Trust is what you're referring to?
Right.
Greg.
Bridgeport Neighborhood Trust, through the CDBG, has been awarded monies for at least the last seven years through CDBG, maybe more. They provide services to about 40 to 50 Stratford households every year. The services they provide is to help people reorganize their family finances so they can afford to buy a home. They help the families qualify for homeownership, and if they're at risk of losing their home, they provide those financial interventions and counseling to keep these Stratford families in their home. So, the evidence over the many years is that, that wraparound service that they provide complements, you know, anything else that the town is able to do, and we should be rewarding third parties, encouraging them, if you will, when they're able to make such a marked difference in the quality of life for our families.
So, now, I wasn't on a CDG. I'm not on it. Was, did that come across to the CDBG board? Was it, or?
Yes, and I will tell you.
Hold on one second, Kim.
Okay.
So, I'll recognize Ms. Rice for that.
Oh, so, so, so sorry. Yes, and as a member on the, of the CDBG Subcommittee, I do find issue, because as a body, the issues that we, we did not give the applicants the opportunity as a body to address the issues that have removed them from receiving the grants. And so, because of that, I can't support it as it stands. I do support the amendment, but prior to the amendment, I can't support it.
So, Tara, can you come up to the microphone, please? And again, like Mr. Connor, I'm not on CDBG. For those in the audience, there's, there's a certain, CDBG is a smaller committee that does the work on this and kicks it up to the council. CDBG is federal funding, and Tara, correct me on anything I'm wrong on.
You're right.
That is allocated very, very, in a very detailed manner.
Correct.
So, before we make any decisions on this, I want to make sure that we understand it. Was for, are there any, are there any, I know how CDB from being up here in the last few years. I know there's trailing buckets in terms of, as things get funded over the years that have been allocated.
Yes.
Would this, would this impact anything? Are there already monies in other older accounts for any of the three that Mr. Khan mentioned? Just give us a little education, if you could.
Yes, so, Bridgeport Neighborhood Trust has a few balances left over, through a few years.
How much?
Currently. Give or take about 15,000 to 17,000 right now, over some years, let's say, the last three grant years to spend.
And what about the two others? Mr. Khan, what were the two others?
The other one, I believe, is just literacy, correct? Yeah, and they have about $1,000 to spend.
Literacy has a thousand. Okay. If you could just stay up, in case there's any other questions for you.
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Khan.
Oh, it was for discussion, not, well, I, I'll ask Tara. Efficient as it may be, is it common for some recipients to take more than one calendar year to expend their financial award?
No. So, these programs that were granted were for public services, and for public services, you have to spend them by June 30th. And after June 30th, if they're not spent, they would go into a larger pot of funds, and they would be reallocated. So, it's more of a use it or lose it situation.
Is that, for example, the roughly $15,000 that Bridgeport Neighborhood Trust has not utilized?
It would have to be reallocated. They did not expend all of their funds fully.
And would that, Tara, educate me, would that be done, that could be done by the CDBG committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Can, Mr. Chairman?
Ms., hold on, sir. Yeah, yep. Ms. Frances.
Question for Tara. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Is, let me reiterate my thought. Hold on. For the, oh, did COVID had any impact in the fact that the 15,000 was not used?
I can't answer that per se, because I was not here for that.
Okay. That's fine. Fair enough.
My question is, did this impact the decision why the CDBG put everything into Sterling? I'm still trying to figure out, you know, if, I'm agreeing with the folks over here, if it's always been allocated, but why wasn't it allocated this time? Chris, you know?
So, I can't speak to how the Subcommittee votes. Since I'm the administrator, the Subcommittee has to make these decisions, because it's a conflict for me. So, there are a couple Subcommittee members here as well that can speak to that a little bit better, but Chris can speak as well.
So, Mr. Timnack, we'll hear from you, sir.
So, real quick, it's, the decision being made, which was discussed, I know at the committee level, is, it's not, it's not about our love for the organization and the good work they do and the good work they haven't done. The reality is that when Tara came on, we were faced with a lot of untimely letters from the federal government. And part of us being untimely is their ability to spend down the money. So, as we wait for them to do the reports and say, hey, this is how I spent the money on it, it puts us in this position where the town is at risk of losing the full $560,000. And when we had these small amounts which are being carried over year after year after year for multiple years, the conversation is, okay, let's, let's get that spent out. Let's clear the deck, and we can start fresh. And one of the reasons why Tara's been so fantastic is that she comes with a, a full-time background in CBDG stuff and knows how to actually clean the slate, which is what we want to do. Instead of carrying this forward and making the ball bigger as it's rolling down the hill, we are in jeopardy through the feds and the CBDG, the HUD, of being untimely. Again, and we were, we were fighting that with our previous CBDG director for multiple years. We want, we want to go with a fresh start, and knowing that they still have money in the queue, it's a great opportunity to say, okay, next year, when you come back, we're going to get it going. Spend down what you have now. That, that was the, that was the.
And if I say, the more balance that, that HUD sees in our actual account, the less money we get as a town. And if we look at what's been happening collectively over the last few years before I got here, unfortunately, because of that, we have been getting little decreases. And what I'm trying to do is get us more and more and more. So, we, what we don't want to do is fund certain programs that have these balances, because that's what we just keep doing, is setting ourselves back and back and back, and we just kind of want to keep going forward and not backwards.
So, I have another question.
So, hold on one second. Any other discussion? Who hasn't spoken yet, because I want to give Ms. Sheik.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Tara. I have two questions, and I'll reiterate off of what Chairman Pia was trying to have you help us be educated. The literacy program that we, through CDBG, has funded, you know, in our public schools from when we had the Board of Ed here, I think of one of their statistics, which was, I think there's 46 languages that are spoken among our kids, or the children that are in our public schools. So, what would be the impact if we did not give that $5,000? Is there another municipal, you know, that is also giving money into that program, or would they only be sitting to have to try and figure out how to use $1,000 over the next fiscal year?
So, that.
Because I hear what you're saying, that we want to make sure that we're getting the maximum amount of funding, but what's the immediate implication?
So, that program is based out of Milford, and this is for adults. It's adult literacy program for immigrants coming into the area, helping them learn English as a second language. And again, I mean, $5,000 is what the request was. A $1,000 could be helpful, could not be. I, I mean, I can't really speak to exactly how many people they'll help with that $1,000. They do have the small balance left over that, that will, they'll spend down by June 30th. I've, you know, I've been talking with them. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really know, because that is a newer program for me, coming into Stratford. It's not something that I'm too familiar with right now, as far as, it's, it's not a child program, but it's, again, an adult program. So, I, I've, I've noticed, though, they've sent out their quarterly reports. The numbers have gone down significantly right now. I don't know if the numbers will jump up over time. I can't, I can't give that answer right now, so.
And then my follow-up to that would be, do you know roughly how many Stratford residents, if it's based in Milford, but utilize that particular service?
The last report I got was 10.
Thank you.
10 people.
Ms. Rice, I had you next.
Yes, so, I first want to say that Tara is a phenomenal administrator. However, my issue is, I don't believe that we did our due diligence. I'm new and did not fully understand the use it or lose it, and no one asked these programs why they haven't used it. We don't know what impact COVID has had on these programs, and I don't believe it's fair to remove them without giving them the opportunity to express what's happening and why they haven't used those funds. That's what I have difficulty with at this point.
Tara, for you. This has been pre-COVID, as these fund balances have been carrying over, correct?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Summer, pre-summer.
A lot, and we, we've been talking about them for years, I know. Who, is anybody else who has not spoken? else who has not spoken, I want to give an opportunity? Greg, did you have one last before we call the vote on your amendment?
I just have a quick question.
All right.
Hi Tara.
Ms. Dantcho, go ahead, and then I'll-
Hi Tara, through the chair. Um, I heard you say that the, um, Bridgeport, um, Trust has fifteen to seventeen thousand in a remaining balance, but as of June 30th, is that going to be zeroed out and reallocated, or is it still going to roll over?
Uh, some will be zeroed out.
Some will be zeroed out.
Yes.
So I, I know that you're new, is this, is, are all of these other accounts going to be zeroed out as well, like-
For the record, I'm only new here.
Yeah.
I've been doing this for fifteen years.
Oh, new here, I mean, new here. So welcome to Stratford, welcome to Stratford. Um, so, um, I'm just wondering if there's any other accounts with remaining balances that are also going to be zeroed out on June 30th. And I'd also like to know if the Bridgeport Trust, um, had submitted an application for funding this year.
They have submitted, yes. They have submitted. Um, and there are some balances that will be, um, zeroed, well, not necessarily, so that, they don't get zeroed out necessarily. Like I explained before, they get reprogrammed into the larger pot of money that then gets, uh, advertised again for the town and other nonprofits.
For Stratford.
Yes, get the opportunity to, to reapply for certain things, yes.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to provide that information to everyone.
Mr. Khan, and then we'll move on on your amendment, sir.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, literacy volunteers, um, unfortunate, they only did ten last year, and they do provide an affidavit when they submit their application. The numbers were much higher in previous years. They do run their program out of the Stratford Library. And again, as a wraparound program that helps new residents integrate into our community, get jobs because they can speak the native language, if you will. Uh, oh, there's a question for Chris Timiak, or even for Tara. Is, is there a maximum or minimum number that the feds look at? Um, for example, we had the Splash Park, which was funded over five different years, added up to about four hundred thousand bucks, but we defunded it because we were, we got a warning letter from the feds, that you're holding on to this four hundred thousand dollars for so many years and you're at risk. So that money was reassigned to, I believe, the senior center, but is there a magnitude before it gets the feds' attention, or is fifteen thousand dollars enough to put us at risk for?
It's not necessarily the, the amount, it's the amount of years that it was sitting there. So the splash pad, um, I'm not sure what year that was. Is that, uh, the South End Splash Pad from year forty? Um-
That sat there a long time.
So that was, that was eight years ago.
Yeah.
So that sat there for quite a long time. So that needed to, and that sat there way longer than it should have. So, I mean, eight years is a long time, but, uh, for a public improvement project, over two years is too long.
Okay.
Um, that, yeah, that's, for me, two years is where I would draw the line on that.
And one last point, Chairman, is, you know, Sterling House is a fantastic institution, well-deserving of all the public's investment and trust. Uh, they do get monies from thousands of sources, so a, this amendment would limit or reduce the amount of money, but they are getting another allocation, Sterling House, of fifty thou-, sixty thousand dollars to, uh, to repair the basement of Sterling House, which is where the food bank is. Uh, so it seemed reasonable that we would not discourage these third parties from improving the social welfare of our vulnerable residents. Uh, that was the intention of the motion. I hope it has your support.
All right, so we're going to call, I'm going to call for the vote right now. Um, Tara, first off, thank you, because I learned a lot tonight from you, and, and, uh, we appreciate, honestly, your, your hard work on this, because I know it's not an easy thing.
This isn't easy, like this.
Well, you did, you did very well.
Thank you.
You did very well. So, um, please to give our thanks to the committee as well.
Thanks for Chris.
So, all right, so we're, we're taking a vote on Mr. Khan's motion to amend. Um, yea would be in the affirmative, no would be against. So, uh, all those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Four aye. All those against?
No.
I vote no. So motion fails four to five. Uh, back to the original motion, uh, for discussion. Any other discussion, Mr. Khan?
I'd like to offer a second amendment.
Go ahead.
This would be to provide literacy volunteers with five thousand dollars and to provide Sterling House not with thirteen, but with eight. So because of Bridgeport Neighborhood Trust's delinquency, removing them and-
Hold on, let's just state the motion.
Motion is to revise under Public Service Sterling House Community Center thirteen thousand dollars, uh, split that into two, one item of five thousand dollars for literacy, and then remove the three thousand dollars, stay in the service.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Frances. Uh, any discussion on the amendment only? No?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Um, you know, I, I would just encourage this body, um, to consider, you know, we talk about a lot about the services that are greatly needed here in town. Um, and this grant opportunity would help our adult learners, um, people who want to be here in Stratford, you know, have their kids go to our schools, um, work here, and, um, they're utilizing this service through the, um, reference of Counselor Khan at our public library. Um, so I would just encourage everyone to think about that, um, and to support the amendment. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Connor.
I'm, I'm just kind of clarifying in my mind what the procedure is. So I think there's really, and maybe, Tara, you could come back up here, there's two buckets of money, there's one that you get allocated for long-term, like the, the, and this is more for my clarification, long-term for building a, a splash pad or something. And then the second group is done annually, like a consumable. Is that correct to say that?
The public service is correct.
The public service, okay. So at the end of the year, and we'll say June 30th, if they don't spend anything, it goes into a general fund, okay? So now I'm going to go back to the question, um, you know, we're kind of second guessing the CDBG. How did we get there? And if we got there because there's no, you know, they were already talked about, and they said they had to, uh, zero those out, and I'm not saying punishment or anything, but we're trying to get a handle on it because of past management practices. That's what I hear you're doing. This is an administrative thing to kind of level the playing field.
Correct.
So you have a better chance at it next year. Okay, all right.
Any other discussion on the amendment only? No? All right, we'll call, we'll call the amendment for a vote. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Um, mo- motion fails four to five. Motion to amend fails four to five, to be specific. Uh, back to the original as discussed. Any other further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dantcho.
This is, uh, I would just like to say that there's a committee that goes through these applications and makes these decisions, and then we get the final list. It's already been talked about, it's already been applied for, the reasons have already been discussed. So to go back and, uh, reallocate money that a committee has already determined is going to go in another direction seems a little bit after the fact. I agree that all of these are very worthy programs, and that we should really consider moving forward with Tara now managing this, that for next year, we have a better evaluation system and avoid these kinds of conflicts.
Any other discussion, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Chris. Uh, the low-income census districts that qualify us for this federal money are all located in the Third, Fourth, and Fifth District. Unfortunately, I'm no longer a member of CDBG, but I do know that members of my district do need literacy services so they can increase their opportunities for employment and engagement with the community. And originally, the subcommittee this year did vote for literacy, and at a second vote, it was removed because, quote, "They didn't spend all their money." But as Tara mentioned, uh, they're only a thousand short, and they can do that by June 30th. Uh, that, I'm speaking to, uh, Ms. Dantcho's point. Um, that's it.
Any other, Mr. Timnack, did you want to add anything?
In the case of literacy volunteers, uh, in their application this year, there was an increase in outside other grants they were receiving from previous years. Now, I think that's one of the turnarounds, that they're getting other grant money from other federal sources. And another thing which came, and I sort of picked up on this one, I was the interim person overseeing CBD while we were in that transition, transition phase. There's, you know, unfortunately, there's not much of a difference in administrating a grant for five thousand dollars and administrating a grant for like, you know, eighty thousand dollars, right? So the more five thousand dollar grants we have out on the table, which become untimely, hurt, hurts the overall thing. So when you sit back and you review all the applications, like, you really have to review the applications to see where that agency is today when we're applying. And then what, what the best benefit for the town is in the, you know, the current situation we're in right now, in, in an effort to, to get a clean slate with the CBDG program and, and accommodate, uh, our HUD, our HUD backers, uh, I mean, decisions which we used to make just like, hey, we'll give five thousand a year, we'll give you two thousand here, just to try to make everybody get something. Um, I, I, I think this is on, like, this is the year when you see what they're getting from other agencies. This is the year to make the correction, where, where hopefully there's enough resources behind that so that Stratford CBDG program's not going to impact, um, impact that much. That, that's the hope, that's, that's the overall vision. And I, it's the best way I can explain it, like, in full transparency of, um, everything.
So, thank you, Mr. Timnack, I'm just-
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second. Uh, Tara? We're pulling you up again, one more question, if you don't mind. For, specifically speaking to the literacy, are there, are there previous funding allocations that can be applied going forward for them?
For literacy?
Yes.
With reprogram funds?
Yes.
So what happens if we reprogram, it goes into a larger pot of money? We put out an, an ad into the paper, just like any public hearing, the subcommittee comes together again, so people can apply, and literacy, just like every other nonprofit in the town, can reapply for the same pot of money and do the same process all over again. And it doesn't have to be the regular, uh, process time in December, it could be any time throughout the year. And that will be happening right after June when we start the new process again. So it will be happening soon that they can reapply again in the next couple months.
Thank you, Tara.
You're welcome.
All right, last, last point?
Last, last point. Um, Tara, uh, our, our agenda, the breakdown of the recipients under the public improvement in housing-
Yes.
-subtotals to three fifteen. I believe it should be four thirty-five, just a clerical. And, and for everyone's amusement, CDB-
Well, no, the total housing is one twenty, the total public improvement is three fifteen, six six three.
Okay, so they're under one heading, but they're actually two different categories.
Yes.
Does housing have its own, of the hundred percent, say twenty percent can go to administration, fifteen percent can go to, uh, human services?
Fifteen percent goes to public service, twenty percent goes to planning administration, and the balance of that then goes towards the public improvement in housing. So the only percentages that get allocated are the twenty percent for planning and admin, and the fifteen percent for public improvement, or public services, rather.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other last comments?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
I'll just stay here.
Go ahead, Ms. Shake.
Thank you. Um, to collect my thoughts now, we've been deemed a distressed municipality. It's not a secret whether we agree to disagree, that's fine. However, um, Counselor Khan's points of how these services directly impact people that live in his district, in Kim's district, in Counselor Rice's district, and in Ms. Franceski's district, and also my district. Um, but I really think that it's not just particularly, particularly utilized in our districts, it's also across the town. Um, so I'm happy that Chairman Pia asked the question directly of, is there an opportunity after we move this to be accepted, to go into the funds to then have a public hearing, like you mentioned, so that we have those programs, um, we give them the opportunity so that they can apply, because there are households where the parents are not speaking English, and they want to be able to connect with their children. So if this is one of the few opportunities that our town is directly, um, providing for residents, and it's not a large number, then I, I would like to follow up with you as well. Um-
Right, so it's not for residents directly, it's for the nonprofits in town.
Yes.
So non, the five oh one C3s can apply.
So I asked before, how many Stratford residents utilize this particular program?
Residents go to the nonprofit.
Yes.
And then they get the services directly through them.
Yes.
Yes.
So hopefully, we have more than ten Stratford residents-
Absolutely.
-next time.
A hun, a lot of residents, I mean, hundreds, thousands of residents use these funds, and that's why we get so much money, uh, through the census tract.
Correct.
Absolutely.
So-
One hundred percent.
So.
We'll talk about it.
And that's how they, I mean, people apply, the nonprofits apply, it goes into the, the newspaper, absolutely. Like, this is utilized every single year.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So, any other discussion on this, because we're going to keep moving?
Thank you.
You're welcome. No? Okay. We're going to call for a vote. Um, this vote is on the original motion, um, the original motion. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Four. Okay, motion passes five, uh, excuse me, five to four. Next, thank you, Tara. Next item on the agenda is going to be, sorry, let me get to the sheet, six point two point two. I'll entertain a motion.
For Dantcho, I move-
Ms. Dantcho.
Six point two point two, a resolution regarding Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, open space and watershed land acquisition grants.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dantcho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Connor. Uh, any discussion? This was provided to us by Kelly in the, in the Pony, open space grant. Thank you again for, for all your work. Uh, any discussion, Ms. Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify, we, a month or two ago, we talked about small parcels by Beaver Dam, and then we also had a letter related to Beaver Dam and our pony. Is that what this motion is referring to?
Yes. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine, zero. Um, next item under new business, um, is going to be seven point one. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
Seven point one, referral with a favorable recommendation from the Public Works Committee. I move that the DTC contract amendment in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred seventy dollars for the Fifth Avenue tide gate be, and is hereby approved.
I have a motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a, I have Councilwoman Dantcho on the second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine, zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point two. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
Seven point two, referral with a favorable recommendation from the Building Needs Committee. I move that the Southport Contracting Incorporated change order number one, in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and seven cents for Flood Middle School boiler replacement be, and is hereby approved.
Uh, motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Connor, I heard. Um, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine, zero. Uh, next item on the agenda is item seven point three. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
Seven point three, I move that the revised engineering and design changes for the Longbrook Park Tennis Court Replacement Project, at the alternate location as shown in the site plan layout and landscaping prepared by Snyder Architects, and issued May fourth, twenty twenty-two at a cost not to exceed seven hundred, three thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars, the amount previously approved on November eighth, twenty twenty-one be, and are hereby approved.
I have a motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sutton. Um, any discussion on Longbrook? So this, just so everyone remembers, and for those of you, uh, we had sent, we had asked, and I'll ask Public Works Director Sarah if she could come up, uh, to the mic, but we had asked them to go back and, uh, work with the architects to see if they could revise essentially- to see if they could revise, essentially, I think, the exact dimensions of it, to incorporate, keeping a couple of the trees, and Renee, if you could provide us with the update, I know you, the schematic was sent out to the council on the Pony, but if you could provide us with the summary.
Okay, so the, what we sent you was a, kind of a draft layout, but it's being finalized in that location. There are two trees that we are going to transplant. There's a pin oak and a honey locust that we are going to transplant as part of this new layout, and one other white oak that needs to be trimmed. Other than that, that is the only issue with trees. This new layout does not require the moving of the batting cages anymore, and it does reduce the scope of work needed for drainage for the tennis courts. So we are just waiting for the final engineering design to go over to the contractor, so he can get started.
So, I'll open up, this is the first question I'll open up to the council, so that, Renee, the cost not to exceed the seven oh three nine one eight, is that within what we had previously allocated last time?
Yes, that's the same contract, we're hoping that we'll come in a little bit less. There are some credits, but as you know, with inflation, there are increased costs for materials, so we are still hoping that the credits from not taking down the trees, from not moving the batting cages, and the reduced scope of drainage will more than exceed the increased cost of materials since we started this process a long time ago.
Thank you, Renee.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Thank you. Hi, Renee, thank you for giving us the summary. I'm glad, as the chairman for Longbrook Park, that we were able to reach a different landing point. So thank you to the whole body, thank you Mayor Hoedick, for, you know, allowing us to get to this point. My only request is, if it's possible for your office, or for Snyder, to provide in writing, just some short summary of what you just told us, so that that's available, you know, the biggest, one of the biggest concerns was the removal of those mature trees, so I'm sure that people will be very happy to hear that it will be two transplants of smaller saplings or younger trees, and then just a trimming of one of the mature oaks that is in the vicinity. So thank you for taking the time, and I look forward to reviewing this further.
Any other discussion? Mr. Khan?
Just a thank you to the entire council, and especially Public Works, for accommodating and presenting this alternative solution, thank you.
Any other discussion for councilors? Ms. Dancho.
Through the chair, hi, hi Renee, I just had a question, the original proposal had sixteen new saplings being planted, is that, are any other trees, other than the three that are being locate, relocated, are you having any new trees added to the plan?
No, we are not. That is not in the plan right now.
I have a question.
Ms. Sutton?
Just from the previous layout or engineer plans, how much closer is this designed to Glendale? Like, is it significantly pushed up, or was it set to be set back further originally? Some of the neighbors were asking, has this been moved forward towards the Glendale side?
Yeah, it's out in the corner of Prim and Glendale, over there.
The question being, was this moved closer to Glendale, like, in further towards Glendale? Was it originally set back further? Has it been moved forward towards Glendale any further?
The original location of the tennis court was behind the fieldhouse, so this is a completely different location. The, the, there's two tennis courts, the one that's currently there, the clay, is going to be a new one in its exact same location. So it's one over one, and then the one that was behind the fieldhouse is now coming onto the corner of Prim and Glendale.
Perfect, thank you, is exactly what I was hoping to hear, thank you.
Any other discussion before we vote on this? Nope, seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine, zero. Last item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to, for item seven point four.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Dancho.
That we go into executive session to discuss item seven point four, as real estate negotiations may involve information that would be changed if it were made public. Members in the executive session should be all town council, town councilors, Attorney Florrick, LeClaire, Hodgson, Timmyak?
Jackson.
Attorney Jackson, oh, there you are. I was, I thought you were gonna be in here. Did I miss anybody? Mayor Hoedick? Are we good?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I need, who was that? Ms. Shake. Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes nine, zero, we'll go into the executive session.
Oh, wow, that was one of the first things considered, second to me, that was, that was...
I don't think I can...
All right, we got everybody? Councilors could come back to their seats, councilors to their seats. Greg, we're gonna start, all right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
By Ms. Sutton, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine, zero. I'll entertain another motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the current agenda to include the sale of Highland Avenue for three hu- three hundred, three hundred thousand two hundred and fifty dollars into the SMAC Property Solutions LLC.
All right, so a motion to amend and add to the agenda, stated by Ms. Sutton, do I have a second to that?
Laura Dancho, second.
Seconded by Ms. Franceschi. Any discussion on just adding this to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine, zero. I'll entertain a motion.
Aye, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the sale of four thirty-three Highland Avenue in the amount of three hundred thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to SMAC Property Solutions LLC.
Motion by Councilwoman Sutton, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dancho, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine, zero. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. O'Brien, do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Franceschi, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, motion passes nine, zero, thank you.